Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The prayer today is, God is saying to you, I know you feel tired, stressed, and completely overwhelmed, but I know that I have your back. But know that I have your back. I am going to send you a blessing to remind you that I'm always in your corner. Amen. Item number one, the Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on May 6th, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
Financials.
Morning Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office. So today's financials include a blanket equipment purchase order from the Department on Aging for the remaining encumbrance to purchase an ADA accessible van to replace the one that had been wrecked and subsequently totaled by Corsa. There's a contract purchase order from the Commissioners to Garrett Electronics Incorporated for the courthouse metal detector and a travel encumbrance from the Common Police Court to attend the Ohio Court Management Program. Among the vouchers are $97,776.72 from the ADP Board to Star 76 Limited for the ServiceNow Help Desk Management Software, which is up, I think, a significant portion from last year. I had asked about what led to the increase. I have not heard back yet. $17,278 from maintenance to countywide windows to fix and replace the 12 windows in the Joga County Bicentennial Bell Building at the Joga County Fairgrounds.
Christie, does it say reaped on encumbrances for the 20-year version instead of wrecked? Can we just...
Are you talking about our financials?
Oh, no. You know what? That's just the highlights. We don't need. That's fine.
It's Redcon.
Okay.
Yeah, it actually is Redcon. I double-checked it last week when the contract was approved.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
And then the next two items here are the monthly financial statements. The first one is the Auditor's Office's requesting the board accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county auditor for the months of March and April of 2025 pursuant to ORC 319.35.
Let's just do three and four together.
Okay. Do you want me to read four?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
And the Treasurer's Office is requesting the board accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county treasurer for the months of March and April 2025 pursuant to ORC 319.35.
I move to approve items number three and four.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Someone from the Prosecutor's Office.
Mr. Spudler.
Prosecutors in very nice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jim Blais from the Prosecutor's Office. If you recall, last year, the board approved a security enhancements and office renovation for our existing space. So since that time, we've worked with TDA, the architects, and the next step is the architect agreement, which has been submitted to the board.
So Jim, that's all within that $200,000, I believe it was that we... Two, right? This is just the workup for the project?
Well, the estimate at the time, back in November when I submitted that, the estimated amount was the $204,000. So the architect's agreement would be in addition to that.
Okay.
However, you know, it's been, that's like, that estimate's about eight months old at this point. So they're having us get an updated estimate because they think, you know, prices have gone up, obviously. So the cost of materials and... So we're in the process of getting that now. I'd kind of told TDA at the time, you know, there were some kind of hot issues with the courthouse. And then if you remember between then and now, that the youth center moved locations and TDA was scrambling to kind of redo that because there was that million dollars at stake. So I told TDA, I'm like, hey, work on the youth center stuff. Mine's not an emergency, although the security upgrades, I, you know, I want to see that done sooner rather than later, so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day.
Bye-bye.
This is, there's two items on the agenda today that you'll see that are very similar. This is one of them, and then Community Development has another one. I have no room left in my bond drawer, so I am getting some cleaning to get rid of some old projects that are outstanding. So this is just me requesting the board to be able to say, hey, is your project complete? Can we return the bond to Meyer Design? So that's what this is.
Go ahead and read item six.
The Board of Developmental Disabilities is requesting the board to place the bid performance bond for Meyer Design for the playhouse replacement project. Is all specifications have been satisfied?
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
Last year, Ms. Bevington reached out to our office about being able to do watercraft registrations, sales, and the bond was received and the invoice for the bond was received. This is to approve and accept the certi and the renewal of that bond for Route 2026.
So she just started taking these registrations last year?
Yes.
What would happen before that? Would people just not register their votes or what was... They'd go to...
They would have to go through, I believe, strictly to the ODNR directly.
Oh, gotcha.
So this is an alternative option to that, that they can just get them ready to go inside our office.
Okay. So I make motion to approve seven.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Right.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
Shane Hajar, Joga County Engineers' Office, here to present items eight, nine, and 10. Item eight, the County Engineers' Office requesting the board award a bid to Rodneye Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Wilson Mills Road, County Highway 8, sections G through L, in Muntzam Township in the amount of $1,269,675, as they represented the lowest and best bid, and the bid bond submitted shall be held as a performance bond for this project.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine, similarly, the Engineers' Office requesting the board award the bid to Vogelsby Construction Incorporated for the pavement markings of various roads in Joga County in the amount of $269,572.85, as they represented the lowest and best bid. The bid bond submitted shall serve as a performance bond.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
Thank you. And item number 10, the Engineers' Office is requesting the board award the bid to Rodneye Paving Incorporated for the placement of crack seal on various roads in Joga County in the amount of $213,825, as they represented the lowest and best bid. Bid bond shall be held as a performance bond.
Nice one. G.I. County just so happens, or Joga Company just so happens to be the lowest and best, right?
Yep.
Oh, it's all move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes. How many miles will they be crack sealing?
Uh...
How far?
I don't, I don't want to say the wrong number because it was, I think it's like 35 miles of roads. And we're going to be doing some limited crack sealing as well. But in the past couple of years, the, our operations have not been able to do all the crack sealing. And then last winter was a little more detrimental to the roads. So we opted to have a contractor come in and do it. It takes a lot of personnel and equipment, which we have, but then it takes us away from other things that we also do as maintenance.
Good.
Okay, items 11, 12, and 13, we'll go through those similarly. Item number 11, the Engineers' Office requesting the board approve and execute the unit price contract with Eclipse Companies LLC for the realignment of Bainbridge Road at Washington Street and the traffic signalization in Auburn Township in the amount of $575,180.57.
Do you just want to go through all of these?
We can if you want. That's fine. Item number 12, the Engineers' Office requesting the board approve and execute unit price contract with Grayline Incorporated for the replacement of the Riverview Drive Bridge, Structure 380-0031 in Bainbridge Township in the amount of $515,636.45. And item number 13, the Engineers' Office requesting the board approve and execute unit price contract with Grayline Incorporated for the replacement of the Haskins Road Bridge, Structure 191-03.21 in Bainbridge Township in the amount of $280,896.50.
So my only comment with this is I saw the contract says it's made and entered into at the city of Chardon, which of course we're not executing. So I just reached out to our APA to ask if there was like a statutory reason why it stayed at like that. And so I think she was going to coordinate with your APA just to make sure that... Because it seems like we could probably update that.
Yeah, it's been that way for a long time and I think it's maybe just a phraseology in the only city that we have, and we are registered as the city of Chardon for our mailing address.
Oh, I see.
You know, as opposed to...
That's what I was just wondering.
Entered into in Claritin Township or Bainbridge Township or...
Yeah, but if you're executing not in the city of Chardon. And I thought maybe it was like a venue or a choice of law issue, but that's addressed in another part of the contract.
Okay.
So anyway, I just asked it as a, just, I don't think that slows down our approval today. But I was just kind of curious if that's just one of those hanger-ons from the old address. So I'll move to approve 11 through 13.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Scott Holden, Brandon, Mr. Sheriff.
Okay, that's because they're not...
In case you weren't sure.
You're the only one in the county that doesn't need to introduce themselves either.
Item 14, you guys already saw this a couple of weeks ago, but this is the state violent crime reduction grant. This is an initiative the governor had on a last year. This is for the pre-award conditions and standard assurances for the purchase of six block cameras in the amount of $12,750, and there is no local match.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye. Building Department.
Yes. The Building Department is requesting the board approve an unpaid personal leave of absence for Zoran Anisik, multi-certified inspector for, for 120 hours during the period of July 9, 2025 through July 30, 2025. This will extend its probationary period by 120 days.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
The Building Department is requesting the board approve up to 40 hours of unpaid leave to medical for Daniel Spada, chief building official, during the period of June 2, 2025 through June 6, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Pete. How are you all?
Good to meet you.
Good. Elaine Malkamaki, Department of Community and Economic Development. I have, I believe it's four items on today's agenda. Item number 17, the Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 25-129, authorizing the board of the Joga County Commissioners to make application to the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for financial assistance under the State of Ohio's PY 2025 Community Development Black Grant Allocation Program, including public facilities, public, Burton, public library in Chardon Township and alternate projects. Oh, the general administration and fair housing should be not under the alternate project.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Okay, it's not. Okay, okay. And further authorize program manager to electronically submit the application.
Oh, I see.
That was a lot.
Yeah, I was confused about the alternate projects. I understand.
So the two projects you pay...
And then those are...
Yeah, and then fair housing.
It's, the administration is not the alternate.
It's not. I read it before, but I'm like, oh.
I know. Like, the motion has to be like a run-on sentence, so there's just like...
Yeah.
Like, it's vagueness.
It's a lot in one sentence.
I got you. All right. I'll make a motion to approve 17.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
All right. And then number 18 is the Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Department of Development's Environmental Review Certification Form for General Administration, Fair Housing, and Planning for the Community Development Black Grant, CDBG, Small Cities, PY 2025 Allocation Program.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 19, Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Department of Development Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan for the Community Development Black Grant, Small Cities, PY 2025 Allocation Program.
So this is the one that kind of doesn't apply, but we have to submit anyway. Okay. So I move to approve 19.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
And then in helping Christie get her bid bond for cleaned out, we have quite a few. Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board release the bid performance bonds for the following projects, as all specifications have been satisfied. There was a rebid for maintenance ADA door upgrades from AM Door and Supply Company, Buildings and Grounds ADA restroom renovation from the Gottschalk Building Company, the Kiwanis Lake Community Center renovations, the Gottschalk Building Company, Berkshire School Board office accessibility upgrade from Lakeland Management, Joga Airport toilet rooms renovation, Marx Building Company, DDC Clinic paving project, PY 19, CDBG, Burton Scott Contractors, the rebid for the Maple Leaf Community Residences Acquire Fire Protection, Women's Safe Paving Project, Joga Highway, rebid number four, Para Transit Van, CDBG, Driver's Vehicle Innovations, Inc., and the rebid for the Camp Colme Dakota Cabin Winterization, and that was Kangas Realty Investors.
Were these all CDBG projects or...
They were. The last three, the Women's Safe and the two rebids were PY 21.
Okay.
And then the other ones, I don't know if they were all 19. I believe they might have been from PY 17 and PY 19.
Actually, one is from 16, two are from 17, two are from 18, two from 21 and 3, two from 22 and one in 23.
Okay, okay.
What year was, what year was the Berkshire School Board upgraded?
20, it was done in 2018. So there was a lot of stuff that was lost from previous staff over the years that were lost in that job, so we're just trying to clean out.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how some of these would qualify for the project. But I'm guessing like things like bathrooms, that's just if it's a handicap accessible.
I think that was a handicapped accessibility. The bathroom.
At the airport?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was it.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't here for those, so I'm not sure exactly what all of those projects were.
The Berkshire Schools one was the board office next to Patterson Center, and it did the entrance way, I believe, the bathrooms as well to make them ADA compliant.
Okay, okay.
I move to approve item 20.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Aye.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Glenn. Good morning. How are y'all doing today?
How are you, Glenn?
Oh.
That's what I want to know.
I'm Pete G.
My name is...
My name's Glenn Burnick from Joga and Maintenance Department, Buildings and Grounds. And with me is Frank Anshulnichi from ADP Office.
Thank you.
Uh, who come here, this is what I talked about here in the last budget meeting. This is that automation HVAC upgrade up at the annex where we're splitting off the courthouse and the annex. And working with Frank, this is going to be something that's really, really great. I'll be able to, or I'll have one person be able to go onto a computer and be able to look at all the buildings at one place instead of going to each location and looking up the heating and AC there. So this is going to be approximately $39,647.50. So we would like to get this going.
This also paves the way for when the courthouse addition is added on to the existing courthouse to segregate that existing HVAC system. Otherwise, if we don't get this done by October essentially, then either the new courthouse or the annex will not have HVAC. So this will get the work done in advance of that and then allow them to make the tie-in to, you know, the new courthouse and the existing one at times.
What other buildings will this take care of?
This one, this will just take care of the annex.
I see.
And the existing courthouse.
Okay.
And then this will be subject to ADP approval?
That is already complete.
Oh, that's, that's right. You told me that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, everything is pretty much prepared to go. Glenn's been working with John the Mechanical for a while now. We have a timeline and execution essentially has to take place end of summer, beginning of fall this year.
And we're also looking at, right off the bat, looking at the safety center. So working with Trenton on that one, upgrading the automation and everything there.
But that one won't be online, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And this one will be segregated as well. This, this opens up, I mean Glenn has had headaches with the system for years, so have we. You know, he and I, last year, in the early morning August hours during that storm, we're sweating it out in the basement there, trying to get things going. This will just alleviate a lot of that and create sort of a siloed system that his people will have access to and be able to control without having the downtime and a storm knocking out HVAC for, you know, half the square.
Yeah.
This could provide us with a good solution across a number of buildings going forward with a lot of control for maintenance then.
I'll move to approve 21.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
I think you all have a good day.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Nick Gores, Water Resources. Item on the agenda today is requesting the Board approve and execute a contract agreement with Phil Mill with Construction for removal and replacement of a drively concrete apron and expansion at our Auburn lift station. We recently replaced the fence, expanded a little bit, and this will give more room for us to get our equipment into that space and maintain the equipment. So it's a pretty much a one, one-off job, a little bit extra just in case we expand the concrete a little bit further.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Bliley.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. Blauer.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Megan Erickson. I'm with the Board of County Commissioners, and I am presenting item number twenty-three and twenty-four. The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Unemployment Compensation Service Agency Agreement between Geogu County and Sedgwick Claims Management Services Incorporated for unemployment services provided period May 1, 2025 through April 30, 2026 in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Did we use the service from May 1 until today?
Yes.
Oh, I'll move to approve twenty-three.
Second.
Mrs. Bliley.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. Blauer.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, the Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Workers' Compensat- Compensation Service Agency Agreement between Geogu County and Sedgwick Claims Management Services Incorporated for workers' compensation services for the period May 1, 2025 through April 30, 2026 in the amount of nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Same question.
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve twenty-four.
Second.
Mrs. Bliley.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. Blauer.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to O R C 121 dot 22 G 2.
And who are we bringing in with us? To executive? Yourself, Linda.
Mr. Corvus from the other party.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mrs. Bliley.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. Blauer.
Yes.
Yeah, they're all, yeah.
No actions, probably be a better session. So that, you got the time there, no?
Yeah, ten forty-one.
So now we'll move down to item number twenty-six, existing courthouse roof. I think Lee is here.
Twenty-five.
He's outside, I think so.
We just asked, last week, to look into the possibility of replacing the existing courthouse roof now since we have to repair. And Lee Rebar is here from TDA to talk to you about that. They've looked at the building again, the pictures that were taken and has recognition.
Good morning, Senator.
Morning, Lee Rebar with Penn Design. Yes. When we first started the project, we knew we had to do some roofing work on the existing building to tie them together. I mean, it was just given. Then, after we didn't, we looked at that, the roofer roofing companies thought, well, they could give us a price to do the rest of the roof since they're already doing the first twenty feet. They gave a price, you know, those change order price to infinity, they looked at it. We never did anything. But then we opened up the wall on the north side where we tying the buildings together. And you had to take that old cornice off, which is actually really just tin, it's not even stone. And it all comes off as one piece. Behind that, we've noticed, right, photos, but the brick behind that is not mortared anymore, it's just kind of loose and falling, the gravity's holding it. So then now when we talked about doing the roof now, we're thinking that it'd be best to investigate the cornice and this supporting structure below the roof before spending all that money on the roof. Yeah. When they do the new roof, they're gonna put a new edge around everything, but that edge will go over top of this metal cornice. If that ever had to be taken off, you'd have to redo all the edge again. So I think it's kind of a step back and take a look at this, what we used to see.
So, I mean, so you're thinking it may make sense to completely replace this roof rather than hold this one section?
Yes, it makes sense because somebody's already doing the first twenty feet.
Okay.
And they had to kind of come around the corner and do the drains.
Yeah.
It made sense to keep going, but then to understand that, you know, it's holding the roof up is, has never been investigated.
Okay. So what do you need to go forward to investigate this further?
Well, that would be, we would have thought that would have been like a phase two, whether we do the work or someone you hire someone else to do the next phase of this project. You know, the existing building has, you know, the windows perhaps, or, you know, there's things to do in the building. That was kind of a phase two. And I think the phase two would have been the roofing, but now we kind of thought of it as being like now because we're already doing that half the roof anyway. But that's really more of a phase, a second phase to the project is the existing building.
I, well, I agree that, that the, you know, the interior at least is phase two, but as far as this roofing, it seems like this should be done, at least investigated to be done now.
It would take some investigation, yeah. I mean, it's a probably a structural engineer would have to. Now, the one thing to investigate what's there, you almost can't really take that cornice off because you can't put it back. We did, we were able to see a little bit above the ceiling in one of the third floor, you could kind of look above because some of the plaster was missing. So if the building were empty, you could probably go above the ceiling and take a look at some spots
Okay.
without taking that cornice off, because once it comes off, it's probably would have to be replaced.
Oh, that'd be unfortunate.
Well, we're putting brand new, we're putting a matching one around the new building right now.
Yeah.
it just seems like the roofing, the roofing is, this needs to be done, but the timing of that with knowing what the cornice potentially looks like is seems like it should be delayed till we should investigate that. I mean, we aren't, we aren't hired to do that investigation or anything, we just happened to open up the north side and notice this. Now, the north side's fine because we just built a brand new firewall right in front of it, everything's solid on that north side.
Okay. So what, go ahead.
So over the process, be to declare phase two of the courthouse project. Investigate what needs to be done with the roof and then take out, take for bins and, you know, what's your recommendation for the process?
Well, I think that would be, well, knowing that the roofing project was just gonna be an add-on to the new building. But if it's now more, more to it than that, then it's more, you know, investigating and designing and doing some structural engineering along with the roofing. I mean, the roofing cost was given a year ago.
It was two hundred fifty-four thousand
Yeah.
last summer, and then the county administrator declined to bring it as a, as a change order.
So with that estimate or guesstimate of two hundred fifty thousand, was there engineering research done before this estimate came up?
No, not, no, we're only finding this out because we, you know, took, we demolished that north wall and saw what was behind the cornice. Yeah.
So was that two hundred fifty-four, was that included portion of the roof that we're now replacing or?
No, that's in a, they had a cost in the GMP to do the work to tie it in.
Yeah.
And then this, this additional cost is to keep going and finish the rest of it.
Okay.
That's shingles, edge, everything.
And when is this one portion of the roofing, is that being done now or?
Yes, being done now.
Okay.
It's not, it's not done yet, but they're
It's in process.
It's in process. There was really no hurry to get that, that portion of the roof done right now.
Well, my thoughts is that we've got to take care of this now instead of twelve months or eighteen months from now it being a bigger problem. You know, I had to seal up, you know, the connecting part of the roof, old and new, and then I just think we should just bite the bullet and see what, see how the estimates come in, so.
Okay, so what's your, what's the process to go for? You said we need to hire a structural engineer.
I think you have to treat that, that as a separate project.
Okay, so it needs to be
Can't just be added on to empty-boned work. I know Marping is the one that gave us the price, they're doing the roof on a new building, they gave the price for the, I'm sure they're they still at hold, or maybe the price has changed, but they probably still be interested in doing the work. But they couldn't do the work below replacing cornice or anything like that. But it is a separate project now.
Okay, okay. That's unfortunate.
But you would not have known anything's wrong until we opened it up.
Yeah.
Right. I gotta understand the roof isn't really leaking.
Yeah.
Everything's gonna be tied in together right now. This is spending two hundred thousand more now, knowing that you might have to redo some work later is a lot of money.
What's the pleasure of the board? To continue the process and get this thing bid out, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we need to investigate this further.
Yeah. Talking you out of doing the roof, I guess, in a way.
Right.
Delaying doing the roof.
No, we, you know, from what I understand, we want to continue.
Yeah, it seems like it needs to be replaced.
It has to be replaced.
But after investigation of
After investigation, get some clear numbers together for engineering, structural, you know, engineering and stuff like that, so I, I for the new roof, so, that's just So we'll probably need to get a change order for TDA then to do this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so whatever that would be, we'll go through that process and then basically get started.
That's correct.
And we'll leave a motion on this, right?
I don't think so. There's really nothing.
Okay.
We're not voting on anything yet. You know, we don't have any quotes.
I the pleasure of the board is just proceed and keep, you know, fine-tuning this to put a new roof on the existing courthouses.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks. The next thing, the discussion about opioid funding, the last two, three years, Jim Flies has been, our prosecutor's been working on, collaborating with other counties, going after opioid funding from different drugstores, whether it be Giant Eagle, CVS, or Walgreens, or whatever, so we've been receiving money for, what, two, three years now, Adrian?
Yeah.
And we're up to around five hundred thousand dollars. And I asked Christina Locomiac to come in, and she, she contacted me towards the end of the year last year to come in and sit with her, bring Linda Perhanian, and to see the do's and don'ts of this funding, opioid funding. So we could help people in Joggett County. So it's, I'm asking my fellow commissioners if you're comfortable with myself and Linda having a meeting with Linda Locomiac to see the do's and don'ts of this one, you know?
Christine.
Christine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Christine, did you want to say anything? You're here. No, you don't have to, I just, you're here, so I shine.
I knew that the funding was available and I know we provide funding for agencies that treat substance use disorders, and so I thought it would be appropriate for us to meet so that we can ensure that we're not duplicating any services or any of the programs, you know, that are being recommended, our best practice. So I was just offering my expertise, I knew that the funding was there, I didn't, so I was just kind of having a conversation with the Commissioner DeWarick and wanted to offer my expertise that that was something that the community wanted to take me up on, so I was just offering.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. I mean, I'd like to see not just like dump all these funds in one year, but we distribute them over a period of years.
I totally agree.
One of the things that just happens to be today is we're having our Opiet Hub strategic planning meeting. So the Opiet Hub became a requirement in twenty twenty under the ORC that mental health boards had to have a strategic plan in order to identify ways in which to help the community, there's different, like, three different steps. And so we happen to have that today from one to four, and we have community partners from all of the other systems that are participating to identify needs, gaps. We have prosecutors off We have the prosecutor's office, sheriff, health, nonprofits, business owners, other entities that the commissioners also kind of are under your umbrella. So that meeting's happening today. We'll be providing information regarding what the goals, gaps are and timelines. So that is a work group that just happens to be today.
Okay.
And it has to do with opiates.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'll get with Linda and then we'll set up a date in the next two weeks or less and start learning about the do's and don'ts of this opioid funding that we have.
There's pretty broad guidelines on how to use money. So, I mean, it's, there's a lot of different things that you all could look at.
Okay. Well, I'll set up a meeting with Linda and you and myself and we'll give the full report to the board. Next on the discussion list is regarding the engagement of additional outside counsel.
Yeah, I brought this up just because I think we should retain, we have one firm, outside firm that we retain. I think we should consider retaining an addition one, O one, in case there happens to be a conflict of interest with our, our current firm.
I'm okay with that. How, how do you feel, Ross?
That would be fine.
Okay.
How are we going to select that firms?
I had a firm in mind that I can, we can put across their proposal.
I mean, are we going to vet a couple of different firms?
If you have another one you suggest, I mean, we could do that. I have experience with a firm, so that was the one I was recommending.
Yeah, two or three that we could have some background on each firm and go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, proceed? Amy? Okay, now we'll move to item twenty-seven, public comment. You have to state your name. You get a maximum of three minutes. So anybody have public comment? Go ahead.
Diana Haskett. I'm a resident of Newberry Business Center Designs by Diana. Also in Newberry. I have a neighbor that I have complained about for approximately almost three years. Currently, I have a lighting issue. They're posting floodlights directing to my home backyard. Two spotlights and now they added two more in the last couple days. They burn garbage and they have no septic system, but they have a hole in the ground. I have presentation documents. If I may share those with you?
Sure.
You'll probably have to absorb this in a couple days. This is the septic hole. Go. And I've got documents that I've showing there's a ladder that's always present. The ladder has moved around the neighborhood, their property. And I show a map also of what I'm complaining about, so.
Have you talked to your township about this?
I've talked to the trustees. I've, I've heard agenda board here is part of my advocate in health department. I called the EPA.
I see you have a sheriff's report too?
And a sheriff's report. Basically, I have to either call them when it smells, which usually they pump in the middle of the night. And, or I have to try and get a soil sample somehow. Showing that it's leaking into my leach field, into, onto my property. It runs, whatever they're doing runs along the fence, by fence and out to the ditch. And I also have a neighbor that had wrote a letter indicating the smell.
Well, we'll take a look at it. We don't know what authority, if any, we would have in this situation, but we can, we can investigate.
Well, I've, I've gone through the steps with zoning and in the health department. I haven't stated that I can go talk with him today, but I've talked with Adam, I've talked with Dan, I've talked with all those people. They don't work on weekends or come out in the evening, so they can't physically see, smell, or whatever it takes for them to do something. There is a letter this year in March from Dan, who was the new director, and it indicates burning the septic and that they would have to vacate their home if they continue. I don't wish that to happen, but I wish for something to happen. This burden, because I can't sleep anymore. Can't think.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in. I hope this gets resolved somehow and just, I know Adam has been out there a couple times, or his staff.
Yeah.
And that's separate from the commissioners.
Right.
The health department.
Always came out.
Glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Howard, South Duffle Village. This Friday is December, excuse me, June sixth, and it's the anniversary of D-Day, the invasion of Europe. And when we came and won the Second World War. There are too many white crosses and stars of David in the cemeteries in Europe that should be acknowledged by all of us. Otherwise, we would not be here today. Thank you.
I acknowledge that every day because my uncle is buried in Metz, France. He was killed November of forty-four. It's all
The largest cemetery outside the United States, Veteran Cemetery, is in the Philippines. And all the veteran cemeteries that I've visited, they all have museums attached to it. And being myself, it means a lot to me and my family because of what I may look enjoy here right now in Jogger County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Um, zero.